Supervisor Flaherty is here, our district manager Chris Schumaker is here, and we have our CPA Stephen Blum today. So with that, I'd like to take just a moment of silence for the event that we had across the state for those people that died. Okay, with that, Mr. Schumaker, do we have speakers?
Yes, we have six cards today, and we'll start with Dr. Lisa, and hopefully I can say this right, Paracion.
Capuchin.
Capuchin, sorry. Your penmanship is so fine, I had a hard time reading it. If you'd like to come up and... And we do have a five-minute limit.
Not a problem, just take two minutes. I enjoy your dog park, our dog park, and we are requesting, representing myself and a few dozen people who use the dog park for their pets, we're requesting grass for the dog park. After the hurricane, needless to say, we lost a lot of grass, and we're requesting that money be in the budget for, I know today isn't a budget day, but when the budget comes up, if you can ask for more money so that we can have grass on both sides and some shade. We are happy to put a tree in if that helps, and we're happy to try to raise money if there's an issue of funding. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Next, Kelly Halbest, Lakeland Circle Dog Park.
Albert.
Albert.
But I'm not a doctor, but I don't like my handwriting. I'm a fairly new resident here in Gateway and would like to thank you for the opportunity to bring this to your attention. I'm also here to speak on behalf of the dog park and hope for grass, also more than happy to volunteer if any, if it should help, but grass and shade, that's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Steve Cobb.
Hi, I'm Steve Cobb, and I live in Bristol Park. I want to, first of all, thank you for the dog park. We really appreciate it. It's the kind of thing that if you haven't gotten into it before, it's going to sound kind of strange, but believe it or not, the dogs love it, too. Four o'clock in the afternoon, my dog's at the front door saying, "When are we going to the dog park?" And I, you know, he can bite, so I go with him every day. We really do appreciate it for the people as well. We've recently had, not a dispute exactly, but we've moved some of the furniture around. In fact, Lisa has bought a bunch of the furniture and put it out there, and there was some question about why is it this way? This is nice for the people as well as for the dogs. We don't bark at each other, but we do sit around and talk and like to be close, so we can talk. I've met so many nice people here through the dog park, for that I thank you as well. In terms of needs, we could use some water. My dog loves to scratch after he finishes doing his business, and he has covered the people at the dog park many times with dust. So, you know, it used to be a whole lot better. I know you've got money problems and there's situations that are coming up that you have to deal with, but, you know, some, there is, I believe, a system, irrigation system there, but it hasn't been turned on in quite a while. Turning it on, putting some sod in, if you've got the money for it, would be a wonderful addition, and working with us on the shade issue and where we move the furniture to would be the other part. So thanks again for all you do, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next with the agenda items, I have Phil Meezy, and he wanted to address Track L.
My colleague, Mr. Schofield, will give you a little bit more detail, but I just wanted to kind of summarize the concerns that the P-PAC, oh, by the way, Phil Meezy, 9296 Tri-S Drive, representing P-PAC. There have been repairs made in the areas that are to be conveyed, but we are concerned that there's still a couple that are fairly significant that should be made. Whether they will or not, I don't know. The engineers, I guess, have okayed everything that's been done. There were a number of minor areas that we saw, quite a number, and Joe will talk about that, and we concede that probably those can be done after conveyance occurs. A big concern at this point has to do with the, what practices, construction practices were followed by Lennar in repairing some of these areas. The P-PAC last week asked that a core sample be done on some of the roads to see whether the correct construction processes have been followed. We haven't been able to get that completed up until now, and I'm also informed by Tetra Tech that the problem may not be in the concrete itself, but in the bedding material that was used. We're concerned that there's going to be cracking and other damage very easily done because they did not use the correct construction processes in making the corrections that they've already made. So that's a concern. One positive, I understand, and someone here may be able to confirm it, I understand that Avila has now approved the easement that's needed so that they can be combined into the Track L conveyance, and I think that's very favorable from the CDD's point of view. Thank you.
Phil, one quick question. The cracking that you're talking about, is this on the roads, the curbing?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Pretty much, yeah.
Margaret, I have one, too.
Phil, this thing got complicated real quick, like last week. Mike and I, and Mike and I say same things, contrary to our discussion, we went down and met with the City of Fort Myers people. I was the understanding that a lot of this was a misunderstanding, and it certainly is. The problem is, in 2015 or thereabouts, when the developer indicated to the City of Fort Myers that the project was done, the City of Fort Myers came out, independent of us, did an inspection, provided a punch list, the work was done, and the city permitted the project. This project, as far as the city is concerned, is over. I tried to, and Mike and I tried to explain to them, guys, there is more than just the engineering on a project. There are legal documents that have to be taken care of to be able to say that the thing's ready for a transfer. You only work with the engineering. Our engineer, or our legal, didn't accept it, and so consequently, the clock never started ticking. And he wasn't aware of that, and that's why he took, and I think Joe may talk about it a little bit later, but that's why he took the position of, if you were in there doing that work, that's why they're the opinion you need a permit to be doing it, because they've already issued it, and they are looking at it as reconstruction, because it can't be repair, because you already had the punch list of the repair, and you fixed it. So we had a real good discussion with him that from now on, let's try to accommodate each other. When the developer comes in for a request for a transfer inspection, you call us, or we'll call you, but let's do one inspection, and we both agree as to what the punch list items are, and neither issues an approval until we know that it's met all the requirements required for an approval. He had no clue that that was what happened.
I think so.
And so that's what made this difficult. They are of the opinion that that work in Track L is done, it's permitted. No reason for any more punch lists, it's done.
So where does that leave us now? Where does that leave the board?
It essentially leaves us, in my opinion, and Tony might have to weigh in, is it looks like to me that we're into, notwithstanding the legal, we're into a warranty issue. We're into a warranty issue with bonds. I don't see any other way you can get around that.
And next up, we have...
Do you have a question?
Just to add, because I mean, if they do a repair, they don't have to do it with specs?
They are of the opinion, again, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, they are of the opinion everything was done 100% correct.
We're agreeing with that. If somebody went and repaired it, I'm asking, don't they have to meet the specs when they repair it?
What they're saying is, is that when the repair was, for whatever reason necessitated, it should have resulted in a request for a permit application.
But it didn't happen. Where are we?
I don't know. What would you say where it is? Kind of up in the, in no man's land. I don't think they're doing anything about it. We told them where we stood and that because of the legal, we couldn't accept the transfer, and then what we did is we went from 2015 to current, and we have this problem, how do we take care of what we now consider as punch list items? I think we're probably going to have to get with Tony and get some idea of how we go on this, but...
So it's not yet?
To me, the only way I can come out of it is you handle it as warranty items and you proceed. I don't just know how else you can do it.
I'm a little confused. Somebody comes into our community and makes a repair, why would that be a warranty? I don't know. Who directed a repair, but a repair was made, that's not according to specs, that should be the whole story.
Well, again, I think I want to hear from Tony how we do this, because it is obviously, county's saying this, we're saying that.
Without having the benefit of having the conversation you did with the city staff, if activities were engaged in after the punch list and the completion was approved by the city, then, and if the city's saying that a permit should have been obtained, and if the work was done without a permit, it sounds like what we would ask the city to do is require the developer to obtain an after-the-fact permit for the work, and then they can inspect it.
Did you get the impression they were going to do that? I didn't get that impression.
Yeah, weren't they going to require an after-the-fact permit?
We can request that.
I think they were in kind of a matter of shock when they found out that we had indicated that we were doing punch lists three years later and that the project was never accepted. That's the problem. All of this could have been prevented, just real simple, if we both go out and do the work at the same time. All of this could be prevented.
Great future direction. We're living with what we've got right now.
If we could make that happen.
Chris, do we have anyone else? Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Joe Schofield. Track L.
Joe Schofield, Carina Neighborhood, Pelican Preserve, Track L on my agenda. Listening to the conversation has somewhat changed what I was going to be stating, but I just wanted to state that in 2017, we started an inspection of our neighborhood and came up with, I don't know, 200-some issues, of which we had the engineering firm come out this past January, go through and whittle it down to about 40 or 50, which we felt were things that should be addressed, the others we felt didn't need to be addressed immediately. They will become an issue for Gateway Services to fix in the future, so it will be a taxpayer expense, but we realize we can't get gold out of this whole thing. Concerning the permitting, I've issued, or given you all excerpts from some of the city documents, and I gave you a copy of Chapter 102 Building and Construction Regulations, and it states, "It shall be deemed unlawful for any contractor either certified or registered to violate provisions of the code and state statutes." Further, it says, "Following acts are unlawful and in violation of which the subject of the violator to those sanctions as provided." I mean, this is a pretty, pretty good sheet. It states that, I guess in the other, let me finish this one first, it includes private streets and roads, which is what a lot of our roads are, and that states that private streets shall comply with all of the design and construction specifications provided for in this particular document, and I think that our attorney should review these and make sure that everything is done to the letter of the law, and I think WCI, Lennar should be required to provide all those documents. They should have them all in order, it should be no problem at all, they should be able to turn them over very quickly. If you go to the building codes, which is the other document I gave you, which is Building Codes, Section 02575, Payment, Repair, and Restoration, you will see in there that it states plainly that permits are required for repair work. If you look at the pictures that I, oh, and it also provides information on how the contractor, the contractor should proceed with the proper work. I've provided pictures before, and I've included them again in this to show you. The contractor came in, thugged concrete out, left it, well, he cleaned it up, left it there, and the concrete, the crew came in later in that day and just poured concrete into those excavated areas. There was no prep work done, they didn't tap the sand down that they poured the concrete on, they left pieces of concrete in those areas, and they just poured concrete on top, and the city code definitively states that there should be a four-inch base of lime rock before concrete is poured, and part of that, the subsurface should be tapped down in preparation for the base. Therefore, I would state that GS-CCD should require WCI to provide all the proper documentation that this work was done properly. As an observation, I would say that there are numerous cracks throughout all of Track L compared to other sections of Pelican Preserve, which, being a novice in this, would indicate to me that there's some difference between the construction practices of the older sections and the newer sections. Having observed how they did the repair work and talking with the crews who stated this is how they always do it, I would question what's underneath the roads and the gutters in all of Track L, and I think we might be going down a path where we're going to have major problems that are going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money in the next number of years. Certainly that sidewalk section that was fixed, all it's going to take is one truck to roll over, and it'll break right back like it was. There's nothing underneath the concrete. So I seriously suggest that you need to look into this. The other thing I question is, if there is a bond, and I know WCI Lennar has stated that they will provide a bond, are they going to prove to the bond company, number one, that they did the construction right? And if they don't, and we find out that the construction is not right, what's the bond holding? Who's going to pay for it? Are we going to get into legal fees? All this has a process that needs to be done step by step by step, and from my observation, not being a civil engineer, but having been involved with some of the civil projects, this was not done properly. Permitting or no permitting, the construction practices done, I don't believe meet any city codes, and I don't see how a bonding company, quite frankly, can give you a bond and state that they'll pay for something that's not done right. And I think that this should be brought up to the bond company if WCI presents a bond to you, to ensure that they will cover damage done to parts or to structures that are not done properly. And you folks are the custodians of this neighborhood, you folks are responsible to the taxpayers, and it's our money that should be judiciously used, and therefore, I think that it falls upon your shoulders to make sure that all proper documentation, paperwork, permitting, construction practices are enforced, and it's up to WCI to supply the data that proves that they did everything correctly. Otherwise, I think we're in a mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Tony, where are we on Track L as far as, was it pulled from the agenda today?
No, well, Track L is on there, and Avila was the remaining issue. I mean, I had my comments about the Track L conveyance, about various certifications and items needed. Avila was, the landscape easement from Avila was one of the missing pieces. That package came in on Monday. If the board wishes to, they can separate the two out and say, well, you know, we'll accept if you wished to, you know, Track L, and we can do Avila later, because they just need to do some cleanup on that. I didn't bring my Track L, did I, the Track L memos?
That's for the last meeting.
Yeah, I think there, I still have some lingering issues from my perspective as to Track L. Once again, the main issue was, I recall, the certification that all the work was done in accordance with all plans and specifications. The district does not enforce the building codes, but in my opinion, the district can require that what it accepts in the way of facilities are in compliance with all plans and specifications and approvals by the various agencies. The counterargument by WCI or Lennar would be, the city signed off on it because they issued their certificates of completion or certificates of compliance. Like I said, that's where the difficulty arises. You know, the city is saying, they don't have an issue with it, it appears. I mean, that's where we have a difference of opinion, that it wasn't built in accordance with the plans and specifications.
Okay.
I think if I, once again, I don't have that memo from, I can try to retrieve my memo correctly, I think that was a couple lingering issues.
Well, then that will come up later on the agenda. I just, I just wondered, because I wasn't sure if the whole thing was pulled or just Avila.
But Avila, in my opinion, Avila can be done separately. From David Caldwell, he sent an email clarifying it was not the intent by sending in the Avila package on Monday to have it considered today.
Okay.
So I appreciate David clarifying that.
Is anyone else?
No, Mr. Caldwell's here from WCI, but he's just available for the later items involving the turnover and conveyance.
Okay.
And the Track L item, you might have made some confusion, you and I, because of the last meeting, it was discussed about handling it separately, but the board didn't vote to handle it separately.
Okay.
So right now, it's all in one piece unless the board wants to consider it separately.
Sorry about the confusion.
Well, part of that confusion was, keep in mind, that Track L and the part with Avila is that it was going to come out because the easement couldn't be acquired. Now, we're of the opinion, in fact, have the knowledge, the easement was acquired, so they've agreed to allow the two to be separated, which makes it a little bit easier.
District Engineer, you're up.
Too young for that kind of sound when you get...
Good afternoon, everyone. So I'm Tyler Wainwright, I will be your district engineer for tonight. So I guess we have two items on the agenda. The first is a task authorization for the lake bank restoration construction management. So this one, we actually brought, I think, before you guys in October originally, and what it is, is for the construction services for the next set of lakes that's out to bid right now. So this is for construction oversight, record drawings, things like that, all the construction services that we would be doing for those lakes.
Questions for Tyler on this item?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve it? Do I have a second?
I'll shug it.
Any further discussion? Okay.
When is the bid closing? It doesn't say, I know it says it went out today.
It's Monday, bids are due. Monday at three or four, I'm not sure, but Monday.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you got that one?
Nope. Second item on your agenda is just our status update. So those are all our open task authorizations that we have outside of our main continuing services contract. The status of each one of those are on there. If anyone has any questions on them, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead.
It says here, you, the permit was submitted today.
For the storage facility?
Yeah.
We tried to. We tried to save the district some money and not do landscaping on the storage facility. So then where the storage facility abuts the soccer park, there's a five-foot buffer that's required, well, supposed to be required right there, and the code minimum requirements is a sable palm every 100 feet or something silly like that. So it's like literally four sable palms along that side. So we tried to do a request and said, we own the soccer park, we own the storage facility, please don't make us go hire a landscape architect to design four sable palms. And the county said, no. So we are in the process of preparing landscaping plans, and we'll be submitting that as soon as we have them.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have one more question, sorry.
It's okay.
1706, all right?
Yes, ma'am.
You're waiting the videos, do you have a date when you're going to get those videos?
No, ma'am, because that's something that's contingent on us receiving them from the developer, so I don't have a date on those. I don't know what specific videos we're waiting on, I think it might be Prado, but no, it wouldn't be Prado. I don't know which ones we're waiting on, but I can get a list of them for the next meeting if we'd like and let you know exactly what we're waiting on, but that would be something we're getting from the developer.
Thank you.
Tyler, is there, is there anything from a task authorization or anything from engineering that is outstanding or that you, that you need to call out or anything that?
I don't think so. I think we're current on all these.
Okay.
The only issues, we're waiting on the facility plan approval at Tallahassee, which is getting very, very close, if not today.
I think it is, I think it's the 15th. So we had to hold off to proceed with that in order to incur funds after they approve it, so assuming they approved it, which I believe they did, we can start doing that from today.
Along that same line, on the six ponds that we have at, well, we have eight approved, and we've six out for bid, Tony and I were just talking about it. Is there a way, or is there a mistake in the way the loan document was written that says we have to have construction complete by August 15th of 2018?
To be real honest with you, I haven't read the entire agreement. I think they sent it over this week, and I know Tony went through it and had comments. I think it does say that, though.
Correct. Section 10.07 says, "The district agrees by execution hereof. Completion of project construction is scheduled for August 15th, 2018."
But yet it says in another spot that the funds have to be spent for initiation of expensive funds in 18 months.
I don't know, I mean...
That's a minus 15 there.
I don't know the, I don't know the process of executing that agreement. I imagine this is a draft, and you can give them comments back, I don't know.
Well, to me, we somehow got to square that away, because with the issue where we're at on the project, that's going to be touch and go to be done by August 15th, notwithstanding the two ponds that we pulled out of the list. Is the proper way of doing this contacting them and doing it through an amendment, or I'm sure they don't do it verbally?
Well, I would suggest there are a number of other aspects of the agreement need to be changed. For example, two of the lakes that are listed in there as part of the project are not part of the project, I understand it.
But, well, they are...
And so it changes the opinion of estimated cost. They're based on the 3.05 million loan on all the lakes listed in that contract.
That's correct. But there is nothing that we have done as a board to stop all eight from going. The only thing we have done is just indicated that we're doing six first to kind of get our feet wet on this new deal before we do the next two. That's my understanding.
The only difficulty with that is that the project is defined as those eight lakes, and so it says by execution hereof, we agree to have the project completed by August 15th.
Well, I'm going by, that's where the problem is.
So if we have two lakes pulled out...
But I'm going by the deal that the project has to be initiated and expenses incurred in 18 months, which gives us time to somewhat stagger them.
Couldn't we just ask for an extension?
We need an answer. Well, we need to ask for an extension of the completion date.
What I would suggest is...
That seems like that would be the simplest...
Well, yeah, under my report, I was just going to go briefly through some of the comments I had. I've not received anything back from anybody else on my comments, because what I would suggest is then that comments be sent, once we get the whole team with all the comments, send them off to DEP, because there are some other comments in there also.
Well, we're going full speed ahead with bids, and hopefully even the possibility of having a chance of March 1 to go ahead if we can get past this LDO issue, which is another nightmare. But this one is a nightmare because of the fact that the two that we delayed and the fact that 15, or August 15th date is, man, even if we got the work done and you had punch list items, that doesn't give you much breathing room. I can't understand why they would put such a limited time schedule with a notice of proceed that only allows 90 days of work. That makes no sense at all.
Well, and one other aspect of the agreement that we may need to modify, too, is that there's a representation that all permits and approvals required as of the date of this agreement have been obtained for construction and use of the project.
And that's not true.
No, I understand, so those are my comments on that, that I've sent it out to the rest of the crew, the team.
What's the, what's the protocol we're using to make this contact to cover all these bases to get all these questions answered? Who's making the contact?
Chris typically gets the agreement from the staff at DEP, and in the past, we've had...
So Chris is negotiating everything then?
Well, no, I mean, and what happened in the past, we had comments, we had some conference calls, and I had some conversations with the general counsel's office, or Tim Banks, or Angela Neck, some of the other people. So what I would suggest is that everybody can get their comments back to Chris. We have one set of comments from everybody, and then we can all decide which ones to send up to DEP and say, please, can we talk, set up a conference call, talk about it to try to get a revised agreement.
Well, can we add one step further? Can we call DEP tomorrow, let them know where we're at, what we're doing, so that they know and are not hit cold turkey on three or four hot potato issues coming in?
I think it's a great idea. Yeah, because right now, this is all premised upon eight lakes, 3.05 million, project completed August 15th, 2018.
Correct.
Mr. Banks, had a comment?
Yeah, and so do we, do we need to include all eight in the documentation?
They're in there already.
Right, so, but is it required? So my point is, do we need to specify a plan of completion, a phased approach, that our approach is we will address six as phase one, and the remaining... that our approach is we will address six as phase one and the remaining two as phase two?
Stagger them.
Yeah, so we can at least call it out, the delineation of, of execution on the.
Well, that, that all goes down to simply, can we be successful in moving August fifteenth back to a later date?
And I think that would probably boost our case for, for the timeframe of completion because we're, we're completing in two phases.
Yeah, and from the standpoint of the proceeds, it said we must draw them down within eighteen months. In other words, it doesn't say, it doesn't change the project completion date.
I'll take that.
No, 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 but, but it doesn't change the, what we're representing would be the project completion date and that we have the permits. There's language in there that says, hey, we, we believe all the permits are obtainable, which is true.
It almost looks like they missed the date on the August fifteenth and put eighteen instead of nineteen. That's what it almost looks like.
I don't know. Once again, I.
Could be a typo.
But somebody needs to contact them to get the clarification because those, those three issues, one, the permits, two, the staggered, and three, the completion date, those are three hot issues that are, are a problem.
I agree. And the other, other comments that I made were relatively minor, but those are the important ones, I'd say, from the perspective of.
Yeah, Chris can make that phone call, that will.
Sent a mail to him today to discuss that, and I think that eighteen month drawdown that that is, or it was just an original schedule, maybe the original facility was planned with its dates and they just weren't adjusted.
I, I think that's the case.
So you've already been, you've already been in contact with them?
I know, it's coming.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments on this?
Bob's raising his hand.
Item, back, back to the. Is there a please there?
Yes, please. Pelican Reserve Stormwater Database. Something?
That's where he said there, he's waiting on the documents from, from the developer.
That one, so in that, what we're doing is we're basically going through and making a big, big database of all of the pipe runs and all of the videos and all of the reports that we got. So what Pelican was looking for on that, what was a summarized table, and there was gaps in things that we didn't get from the developer, not necessarily things that would normally come in the conveyance, but items like, you know, written reports and things like that. So we requested all of that, but we didn't necessarily get all of it. So we've got most of it done, but there were items that we were waiting on. I, I can't tell you what those items were on because Stephen was doing it, not myself, so.
My only comment was it said no action and there's been constant action. Stephen's doing a great job. We're very happy with what you did though.
Yeah, I mean, there's, yes, there is action, but there's not been a complete deliverable, so.
Okay.
Margaret, I do have one. Tyler, we've done the initial submission to Lennar Baraco on Hampton Park. We have now done a subsequent follow-up to that with all the remaining comments that we had. Have you guys received anything in the way of a timeline? Because they're giving us the indication that they want this whole thing done by March thirty-first.
Um, I did get an email from Carl today asking about the survey information that Gateway provided to Baraco, the stuff that they got from Sand Tech. And I know he said that he was working on the responses, you know, when he was emailing, but other than that, I haven't had any correspondence with him.
Thanks, Tyler.
Thank you.
Margaret, may I assume we moved well past item number two on the agenda, the, the audience public comment?
Yes.
May I ask why my request is being ignored?
I, I think it was an oversight, because I know that you did turn in.
Keith Erickson, do you have my slip?
He handed it down.
You said you had six originally, you only called five people.
Now, what's the official count?
What's math got to do with it?
We need to confer that with our, our CBN, our in-house account.
That was because I wrote a comment under there, it was about Dog Park and the water.
Bill, I gave it to you, did you hand it off?
Yeah, I have it right here.
Am I allowed to speak?
That was my oversight.
Yes, it is, just sorry, merely an oversight, I apologize.
I'm Keith Erickson, I'm from Waterford Village. I do admit that I've not attended each of these meetings and perhaps I'm a bit behind time. And my question is about the ponds, and I hope it can be very simple. First question I have is how many ponds did the SF WMD tell us that we needed to repair?
Sounds like somebody read the Gateway Sun.
I didn't.
Is there any problem with reading that?
Uh, no, no problem at all. The issue is, is that we had a compliance letter from the state on pond one sixteen, no, one twenty-four, one twenty-four, which is the one that they'd received a complaint from a neighbor on. Upon receiving that, we went in, met with the county to find out just what the issues were, because there were other communities, other ponds and other communities that had similar issues. And we were given a description by South Florida Water Management District of what the issues were, and there were two. It was the escarpment, and they told us if you had escarpment over nine inches, you got a problem, you gotta fix it. And the slope is four to one or six to one, and if you were less than three point seven to one, you gotta fix it. We then got proactive, went out and established at least three parties. Staff did one, I know our pond committee did one, and I believe Tetra Tech did one, and divvied up our fifty-five or fifty-six lakes into three categories of ponds that had problems. Ones that were significantly bad, the ones that were bad, and then ones that were partially bad. And into three phases, and we're working on those as we proceed.
But they, they notified us only on one?
They only issued us a non-compliance on one.
And we're, we're, we are required to repair that non-compliance?
Yes, and we did.
And how many are other, are, are out of, out of specification?
By our count, there were fifty-five ponds total of the sixty-four ponds in Gateway.
Thank you.
What's the next?
That's exactly what I told the Gateway Sun the other day.
District Council is up next.
Yes, if you, and what I would suggest, Madam Chairman, if, if you and the board would, I think it's appropriate, item three B, little I really goes with five C, and three B, double I, little I goes with five D, if you wanna take those up at that time and wait for that, I mean.
Or we can do them now.
Let's do them now. You'll be compressed for time, so you have to do that.
And I think my memo was, the first one, just for the audience's benefit, is three B, little I, is with regards to the Pelican Reserve Tract L proposed conveyance of road rights of way and landscaping improvements.
So that goes with five C?
Yes.
Okay.
And went through briefly the history of it, and I had some minor changes with regards to some of the, like the landscape maintenance, we're inserting the word future. On the bill of sale, I suggest, my recommendation was an inventory verification needs to be made of the amount, quantity, and quality of the transfer improvements, which includes irrigation, landscaping, and other materials. That's in the bill of sale. And then we need a current owner's affidavit, the other one was from November two thousand seventeen, and to delete one item from the title report. Then there's a January two thousand eighteen submittal that we can ignore for now, my recommendation, three, because we do have the Avila package and that's separate, and that's what that reference is. And again, there are, I'll call relatively minor matters need to be addressed, and if those are corrected by WCI Lennar, items one, two, and three, one and two, as to January two thousand eighteen submittal, if they make the recommended changes on the two thousand seventeen submittal, that would be recommended for acceptance, subject to those corrections, from my perspective. And I don't know if Tyler or Chris has anything to add to that. And what's important to note also, I believe in the submittal, there actually was landscape material listed in the bill of sale. So the whole idea about, you know, what we're taking needs to be the type, quantity, and quality is important to verify.
So this is merely landscaping?
No, this is roads.
Roads and landscaping.
Roads and landscaping. And Tract L.
So with what was talked about earlier, is this the same track, or is this different?
Yeah, I believe it's Tract L, it's the same track.
Same track.
Once again, I did not get into the engineering or the, you know, the curbing and all that. Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, because part of that you have, going back to five C, you have Tetra Tech's memorandum on that, which also needs to be taken into account, I believe, when you make the determination as to how to proceed. That's a page one or two of the agenda.
Correct.
I'm sorry, Mr. Guy, I just wanna make sure that we tied them together.
Mr. Guy, go ahead.
Thank you. Considering what we heard from Mr. Schofeld a little while ago, together with pictures and a lot of legal work, before we take this matter into consideration, I'd like Mr. David Campbell, Caldwell, Caldwell, to come and tell us why we should accept Tract L at this time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
David, would you come to the podium, please?
You've been so served.
You've been summoned.
Dilly-dilly.
Good afternoon, I'm Dave Caldwell with WCI Communities, Lennar. Good afternoon, board members. Why does WCI want the district to accept Tract L today? Is that the question, sir?
You paraphrased it well enough, yes.
Well, there are several points. The obvious is, you know, from the early days of the community, in creating the documents as well as the dedications on the plat, and why this district is in existence was for the purpose of accepting infrastructure. So that's one.
That's a great, big generality.
Yeah, and you do a good job at taking infrastructure when we give it to you in an appropriate way. Two, we have endeavored to design and construct and deliver that infrastructure, and specifically Tract L, to the conditions that you would accept it. And we think it's to that point. And you can say, well, there's a broken curb here, or there's a dead shrub there, and it just prolongs this discussion, week after week, month after month. We're running out of time. You know, I don't make the decision, but you've already been delivered a letter from our operating division president. He's very frustrated by this process. We incur in the neighborhood of about six to seven thousand dollars a month in the operation and maintenance of Tract L. And we've done so for about eight years. There comes a point in time where irrespective of what you might discuss here and your concerns about getting to some level of perfection, that we won't be able to address and make you satisfied. You know, it's a road, it's used every day, it's observed every day, it's, it's benefiting the residents every day, yet we are on the hook for the maintenance, and every time something breaks or dies, you want us to go out and fix it, and then bring it back for your consideration two or three weeks later. There's a frustration level on our part. I think your staff has done a very good job of going out, inspecting things, we try and bring it to their acceptance level. Your council has reviewed documents, we're prepared to give him those documents in a form and substance that he has asked for. I think we're to a point, do you want it? We wanna give it to you. If you don't want it, please tell us today, because we know how to deal with it.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Would you describe Plan B, how you're gonna deal with it?
We have a master association at Pelican, and they're fully equipped to take acceptance of it.
Well, that's saying you're gonna hand it off, you're gonna hand it off from WCI to WCI?
It goes to the association. If you won't take it, it will go to the association. We are not going to continue to own it.
Mr. Banks, you had?
Hey, David, just real quick, when, I think there's a, when you talk about perfection, I look at it more as perfection versus satisfaction. And when, when we've got pictures of, of repairs, that, what calls into question is just the, the quality of the, of the repairs or quality of the work. That's really where my issue is, is looking at, you know, if there is certain codes and standards that aren't being followed.
I, I think, you know, how many people are you going to look to for your advice for acceptance? I believe you have a staff that you pay very well, you have consultant engineers that you pay very well, you have an attorney that you pay. They've recommended for the acceptance.
What's conditions?
Okay.
Go ahead.
David, has WCI Lennar received any written or any communication from City of Fort Myers of issues regarding this failure to get a permit of what I talked about earlier that would be hanging over our head if we make a motion to accept and approve?
Well, let me, I honestly do not know the answer to your question. I mean, with lots of people involved on the WCI side, it's possible our engineer, RWA or Baraco or Waldrop may have received correspondence or corresponded with the city. I'm not privy to that information. I think, you know, the issue with the permitting of these punch list items wasn't to circumstan, circumvent some kind of city permit. We get hundreds and hundreds of permits every, every day from various regulatory agencies, including the City of Fort Myers. So our consultants are, I'll say, quite aware of what's needed. They told us, when the question came up several weeks ago, they couldn't believe that the, what the city said to you, that they didn't think that that was correct. And typically, a repair issue after and when an active development order would not require, require a, another review, permit, or inspection, it would just be done in order to get your final CC. I think the lapse might be that the city has it on their computers that it's a closed permit. But the issue is, you know, the function of what was done, you know, someone inspecting it, having the contractor come out, make the repair, would otherwise, absent, you know, the normal, you know, what the city is saying, well, it should have been re-permitted or something, you know, it was still done in the, in the same course and of action that we would normally have done.
Okay, well.
So I am not aware of any notice by the city. If there is an active notice on that, I can go back to our engineers and we can, if we have to get an after the fact permit, we will do so to satisfy that requirement. But I don't, I'm still surprised that that's the city's position. If that's what, if I'm hearing, I only know from what I hear from you guys discussing.
You're going right down the line to where I was, wanted to go to next. As, as I, I'm leading toward a motion, but I first wanna make sure I'm clear on all this. It's my understanding, again, talking to Martin, Bill, was that the name? Bill Martin?
Porter.
Porter, Porter, Porter. Billy Martin, baseball player. It's my understanding, talking to him, that had we accepted this in 2015, okay? And we, Gateway Services District, and this is as it relates to the city of Fort Myers, if we would have gone out to do any work on that road, for example, the curbs that we're talking about in question, we'd had to got a permit. That is not unlike what we were told and what we have accepted with Lee County when we turned over those roads, and we gotta go out and do anything, or we park a truck along the side of the road with mainscape or whatever, there was discussion of we had to get a permit. So it, it sounds to me like, at least to the knowledge and concern of the City of Fort Meyer, we are under their thumb on these issues. So if we accept that thing tonight and something comes wrong that we have to fix it, or a bonding company comes in to fix it, there has to be a permit filed. I'm just trying to find out, as, and you're saying that at this point in time, you're not aware of anything, but if one were to come out, a request come out, WCI Lennar would honor it and get that request taken care of?
If it's to those earlier repairs, yeah.
Yes, yes, that's what I refer to. I'm not, not making up something else that's in there.
Mr. Guy, you wanted the floor back. So go ahead.
David, did you happen to see the pictures that were presented earlier?
No.
Would you take a look at them, if I can get them passed? Would you take a look at them, if I can get them passed?
Wow. That will carry back.
Mr. Guy, I think that was David's response.
Was that like a bleep?
So, it'd be written, so it'd be done.
Yes, go ahead.
While he's looking at that, I'd like to hear from our district manager on your opinion on this.
Well, I brought it to the agenda because from my examination, the district engineer approved and had a punch list that was taken care of, and the jury's district attorney's items were addressed. And so, you know, at that point, it's bring it to the agenda. I know they had some issues there, and I would assume that, said they just missed a few of the curbs. It would be a warranty issue, we would notify them, because once you accept, you have a three-year warranty period, you know, on those repairs. So, that's the way I was looking at addressing, you know, those minor things. As far as the permitting and the sidewalk, it's the same thing. They were approved by the City of Fort Myers, the plans were approved, and they were constructed. And so, with all those engineer stamps on them, you know, the engineer approving it, that's why I moved it forward to the agenda.
Okay.
The only thing I see is that Mike, just to make sure we dot the i's across the t's, Tyler, or, yeah, Tyler, has everything been approved?
Hold on just a minute, because Bill was not...
Oh, I thought you were done. I'm sorry.
Let me turn it back to Bill.
Thank you. Tyler, would you come to the podium, please? Did you get to see these pictures?
Yes, sir. I have seen the pictures, and I have walked there and been there in person.
If you could repeal or reject the approval, the engineer's approval on these items, would you?
No, sir. And the reason why is because about 98% of those pictures are in Carina Phase II, not in Tractel.
Well, let's talk about the ones in Tractel here.
So, there was two items in Tractel that we asked them to repair. One was a sidewalk panel, and one was a section of curbing. And they repaired both items since the time those pictures were taken.
Finished.
Okay.
And for clarification, I think Tyler, in his memorandum, it's at page 103 of the agenda, referenced that the areas within Carina Phase II should be repaired, but held off until Casella is complete. Is that correct, Tyler?
That's correct. So, that table right there, the table up top, that's in the development that was permitted called Carina Phase II. So, it's basically the next project that was in line after Tractel. There were two items that were in Tractel. One was a cracked curb, one was a sidewalk panel. Both of those items have been repaired. Additionally, there's, when you drive down Cypress Grove, there's a big roundabout at the end before you hit Casella. That roundabout absolutely needs to be replaced. I think that's actually part of the Casella permit. See, the Casella or Carina Phase II, it's right on the boundary. I don't remember which one it's in.
But it's not Tractel.
Either way, it's not Tractel. That also needs to be addressed, but we were just saying, "Hey, you're going to continue to break it while you build Casella, so just wait until you're done building Casella." But as far as Tractel is concerned, no, sir, I don't have a change in our recommendation. The items that we found and we asked them to be repaired, they repaired it, so.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Flaherty, did you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Back to you.
I'll go ahead and upon the statement made by Mr. Dave Bob...
State your name for the record.
Bob Geppert, Pelican Preserve, member of PIPAC. To Mr. Caldwell's comments about engineering approval, staff approval, and somebody else's approval, seemed to be an implication that the residents shouldn't have a vote, or a say, or a comment. And I strongly disagree with that, not to any particular item on Tractel, but in general. Because we, the residents, are the ones that discovered mitridend sections that were broken on things that this board approved, because we were told it was good. We had pipes that ran under buildings in areas that we conveyed to us, and we were told they were good, but they weren't good. And we still have one that is under a building in the town center. We had pipes that were not completed, they just stopped in the middle of fields, you know, on things that were given to you and said they were all good. We had pipes that did not reach the Goodwill Shopping Center, and I can go on and on and on. And the only comment is, to Mr. Caldwell and anyone else that cares to listen, were it not for the residents' vigilance, all this stuff would have been fallen upon us to pay. So, we may not be recognized, and we're having a number of issues right now with WCI, Lennar, but we're not going to be quiet either. When things aren't right, we bring them to this body, because you are us. So, they may not like it, but that's the way it is, and it's not going to change. Thank you.
Do you have any specific objection to our approving Tractel?
I do not.
Thank you.
And one last comment before I leave, and I'll give a little bit of an attaboy, because as it relates to Prestoria and Preto, the thing that they refuse to do for Tractel and Carina, and that is clean the catch patients like we did, they're doing it for those neighborhoods because they haven't been conveyed. But they wouldn't do it for the neighborhoods that are currently under consideration. They didn't do it for Tractel. But for the ones that are going to do it, we did get a report, and we're grateful for that, because if they don't do it, we're going to do it.
Thank you, Bob. Is it something different than what you said? Very quickly, please, because we've got a lot on the agenda.
Joe Schofield, Carina, I know you have a time limit to get out, too. I have a dumb question. What is Tractel by definition? And I thought Carina Phase II was part of Tractel. Is that not part of Tractel?
No, I'll go. You don't need to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You making a motion or lie?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm going to make the motion that based upon David's comment, that he will preserve and protect us on and in the event of the city coming up with a request for permit documentation, that we go on ahead and accept Tractel.
And David, did you hear that?
Yeah, if I'm involved in those reasonable repairs or...
Well, it's the permitting. If the City of Fort Myers requires you to go get an after-the-fact permit, you'll do it.
And also, is it subject to correction of the documents as referenced in my memorandum?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
One second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that was...
Glory, hallelujah.
Now, we've got the other one, which is Azura?
No. I think the next one is...
Margaret, we do need to, we make, we need to clarify one thing. The acceptance of this Tractel is without the reference to the Avila easement.
That's correct.
The Avila.
Correct.
That'll be a separate...
They want it a separate issue. Yeah. So, just clarify that.
I think the next one is Prestoria Utilities. Is that, which is my memo, is that 3B2I? It goes with 5D, like in David. My perspective is just one minor, need to match up the legal descriptions. That's all I have. And so, the rest of the 5D begins at page 115.
Can we make these run smoother as we go into, if we can get staff approves, engineering approves?
Yeah, staff, yeah, staff and engineering, I'd like to hear from both of them on this one, but I think we're ready to go, based upon what's in the board book.
Prestoria Utilities, we have no problem with it. We had a few issues with some sand from cleanouts knocked down during, you know, home building, and they came out last week and vacuumed it and cleaned it to our satisfaction, and we appreciate that.
And there's, is there any objection from engineering? Nope.
No, ma'am, we're all set.
You ready for a motion?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I lose that the Gateway Services CDD accept to turn over the bill to Prestoria Utilities.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Anything else?
Yes, just briefly, I hand it out for information purposes only, a follow-up email I sent to WCI with regards to the FPL easement lands, to try a separate meeting to go over the items that we, that the board discussed, accepting it's subject to a number of issues.
Okay.
I've not heard back yet, so hopefully we will, so hopefully. Again, I suggest keeping that as an action item.
And do you have any timeframe to turn around on that?
No, I've not heard back from anyone else to the meeting.
The only reason why I ask is, in our board advance, we are, I think, going to spend a little bit of time, I think, maybe talking about the, our parks and recreation or just development.
Actually, we're...
Have we pulled that?
Well, there isn't. The board advances for...
Management.
Management and...
All that stuff that we were told we were going to talk about in the meeting, we're not talking about in the meeting, so we got to talk something about it, either at a different meeting or in this meeting.
It's...
He didn't want to, Joe didn't want to talk about any operational stuff.
Okay, so we're not talking about capital projects, or, so we got to have another meeting for that. Okay. All right.
It's just for information only, just as a follow-up.
This is all administration, administration planning.
And I already talked about the SRF agreement, working on that, and Avila. Area nine had a good meeting with Mike Tisch and Chris, and Chris set up with the folks from Reflection Isles. They understood better now what the issue is, and they need to talk with their folks. And of those folks that we need to, when our WCI is trying to get to join in or engage in the litigation for the Quiet Title or the Reformation of the deed for the access to Area nine, but it was a good meeting. They're not, they seem like nice folks, which is my general impression. And they were confused on some issues. I think we clarified a number of issues with them. And that's all.
Did we get a surveyor contacted for the, or, and, or talk to Johnson Engineering on the FPL easement?
Not yet, and that was part of the meeting. If you look at the email that I was trying to do, is make sure we all do everything in a coordinated fashion.
Get that going.
Yes, sir. And that was the hope, to get everybody around the table, say, "Okay, who's going to contact Johnson? What does Johnson already have?" I think Johnson Engineering has a ton of stuff involving that FPL easement, prior surveys from years back, so just trying to get everybody around the table, make that easier, as opposed to separately reaching out. Nothing further, ma'am.
Ms. Flaherty.
Yes, I do have a question for the attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
The letter to the Charter School, did you come post that?
I prepared a draft and sent it to Chris and Mike, I think, what, two days ago, maybe, I think. I noticed today they weren't parking in front of the Charter School, they're parking for theirself. On the right of the...
Well, the restaurant sure as heck is.
Yeah, that was...
It's a mess.
So, yeah, that draft has been prepared.
And, yeah, may I ask another question?
Of course.
Thank you. So, has the other letters gone out to both the Brown University and to Sauce Meatballs about the parking to, because that letter was drafted before?
Yes, it was. The letter went to Brown, and Mike hand-delivered it, and I couldn't...
For the record, Michael Tisch, Public Works Manager, hand-delivered a letter to the owner of Brown Academy. He was in town on Monday, so I've had a conversation with him. And then a letter was also sent to the Gateway Charter School and their attorney, that Tony had drafted a letter that I...
Thanks, Mike.
Sent to them. And then we received notification today, Lee County, I guess when you put up no parking zones, there's a requirement that they do notification in the newspaper, so there's a, they sent me the notification, it'll be posted in the news press, where there'll be no parking zones established along Gateway Boulevard between Commerce Lakes Drive, or a small section of Commerce Lakes Drive to Gateway Boulevard, and then Gateway Boulevard down to the business entrance just before the Charter School. Then there's going to be some no parking signs posted in front of the Brown Academy, and then also in front of the Spicy Meatball.
Thank you.
We still have a few issues to deal with along Commerce Lakes Drive where they're parking, because that's not under county jurisdiction, and we have to work to resolve that internally, but, yeah, there are areas the county is addressing.
Thank you very much.
Mike, if you'd be so kind as to send me a copy of the letter you sent to the Charter School, in case I get a call from your attorney?
Sure.
Appreciate it, thanks.
District Manager.
And basically, most of the things that I had on my report today, we've discussed and board advance next Thursday morning. And we're working on the SRF loan, and we'll also be working on the payment request. The DEP's gone over our final paperwork for the original project, and we anticipate in the next week making the draw on that multi-million dollar expenditure and repaying the center state loan, which is due by the 21st of next month.
Excellent. Yes, I want, I have a question. Did we get any money from FEMA or the insurance company to cover the hurricane damage?
Right now, we're continuing to work on that in the process, and we're working weekly with the FEMA folks, but the time you would see a check would probably be nine to 12 months from now.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Did we get the, is this the official agenda that's in the website and gone out to make us legal for the advance? I know it was in the newspaper, I saw that.
Supposedly, it is. The only thing, Russ Wire's name's listed on there on the district assessment methodology report, and I think Mr. De Servo sent you folks the agenda, and it was posted to the website.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're all legal on that meeting.
And the folks at Gateway, that their entry had been notified, there'd be, you know, a public meeting going on, so...
That one I can help you on.
Madam Chairman, I mean, Chris, just briefly, or Stephen, if you could contact Regions Bank, David Lapita's prepared a trust agreement that we need for that conduit, I'll call it, for the funding, you know, from DEP. And Stephen sent it to Regions Bank, and you can follow up with those guys.
Sure. I did follow up with them, they are, it's in there, we will be right now.
Okay, appreciate it. Any nudging would be greatly appreciated. Thanks.
All right, utility manager.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall. Mr. Tinkley, you asked me for the totals for the AMI for the year, for 2017. Me and Leslie sat down this afternoon and went over everything. It's 573, 573 is the grand total for the year for 2017. We've also, we're, we are hanging stated about 100 per month as an average. We did 102 this month, up to date.
573 for 2017, but that was, was that a full year?
That is one full year.
And you're saying now we're running 100 a month?
Yes, we're averaging.
That's 1,200.
We're, if it continues on this rate, that's, that's, yeah, we'll be, we'll be right around there for a year.
So, we're, we're well...
It's well above what we are averaging for 2017. Say, when we asked them if we were going to get to 500 for the year, and they said no...
We put in, what, about 67, 6800 meters ballpark?
Are these defective ones, you're talking about?
The MIUs.
The MIUs?
So, that one and a half percent, or whatever it was, has got creep.
It's definitely trending up, and it's staying, it seems to be, it's staying up. But that is, that is our running, our running average for them.
I'm sorry, can I, what was the total of, total installs?
Probably around 67, 6800, something like that.
There's 7,700, I think, 42 on the system right now, MIUs.
7,700 on the system now?
On MIUs, yes, they report to the system.
So, we had 573 defective in 2017, and we're averaging about 100 a month, so we're sitting at about 200 for 2018 cumulative?
No, oh, that's for a bi-monthly, so we're averaging, yeah, but this, this January and this February, we spiked up to over 100, or 103 is the number.
So, I multiply that times 12, it should be multiplied times six.
Times six.
Six, so it's about half that, so we're, five or 600 again.
We're going to be in the 500, 600 range. Actually, it's going to probably go, if it's, if it's following the trend, it's going to go up, so.
I'll ask this one more time. Have we contacted any other vendors that have this equipment to verify they're having the same problem we got?
I have talked to Bonita Springs, but they were not forthcoming, and they've just, I know for a fact they have Punta Gorda, the city of Punta Gorda now, they will be doing a project there. So, if you take away these, if you take away these, the MIU situation and the 2015 installs, the system runs good. The only, it's doing exactly what it's supposed to be doing. Our biggest, biggest call-out for the system is the leaks, or high consumption. If your meter's leaking, it sends us an alert and tells us, and one, one of our few people will show up at your front door and let you know that you most likely have a leak, or high consumption is another one. This 2015, this series, is the problem with the installs. That is where the problem's coming from.
In eight years, this is going to become our problem to a percentage, and then dwindle.
And it will scale up.
What is the cost, if we were doing this right now on our own, and we had to send those up there, what is the per-unit cost of those?
$77 for the MIU, and then, you know, we add another eight to $10 for the kit that goes... $77 for the MIU, and then, you know, we add another eight to $10 for the, the kit that goes with it.
So, say, what, 80? So, we're looking at a $40,000 a year-
Maintenance.
Maintenance issue?
And that, this is for a defective, they, what they consider a defective batch. We have our, we have our MIU units that we've installed in the same time period, and we look at the fail rate of that. It's not, the numbers are, you know, much bigger. They installed 6,000 of them in that, in that 2015 timeframe, where we installed 300 or 200 and compared the fail rate.
But, but bottom line is, after they get done subsidizing this through the warranty, our cost per unit is about 80 bucks.
Well, what you have to- Okay. Are you, are you trying to say that we'll go through a complete turnover?
I have no idea. I don't know what the war-
You know, because when we check out, that's difficult.
That's something else that we need to do, need to check, is now, what's the turnover? Is, is, are we turning over the same one multiple times, or is this 500, a new one every time?
Yeah, I mean, that's when you-
That's really scary if it's multiples.
If you're trying to project out, at what point?
It's, it's the, it's the 2015 installs that were on the original project, that's where the problem is.
That's where the problem's at.
Yes.
But the ones that have been fixed since then, we're not observing a-
But there hasn't been-
But does that fall within the same time period too? I mean, you're not bringing out these apples.
That's good news, we're only vulnerable for 6,000 of them.
And they've, and they've, every, I say, in my defense with dinner, everything they've done, they said they do, they did, and they do. And they stand by everything they do. We are looking at a new meter box, a retrofit, and to start sampling it, to get it, to get those MIUs off those leaks.
Kenny, what, tell me again what our warranty time period is?
Excuse me?
What's the warranty on those?
I believe it was 20 years.
20 years.
And it had a 10-year proviso of no cost, and then it staggered down 90, 80, 70, 60, 50, 40, 30, 20.
So, even though we've got these defective, it's not costing us-
Not yet.
Except for labor.
Labor.
Except for labor, it's not costing us anything.
Not yet.
Okay, all right. That's all I have.
And this is, we have, we've, we've pretty much completed our, with Pelican Preserve. We, today was, we went into a unit in Casella and replaced the water lines. And we were going to do one more in Matarita, these are the, the worst ones. The questionnaire that the Resident Alliance put out, there was three residents that reported that, that the flushing did not help them at all. And I went to each one of them to, to say, ask if we could swap out the water lines and see, on the cold water side, to see if this would solve the issue. One of the people that reported, no, I talked to, and she no longer had the problem, said, don't worry about it, you don't have to do anything for me. And then we took one, one in Matarita that we went into the bathroom with, I took the plumbers in there, and there was the smell. So, we're going to swap out those lines tomorrow morning, and we will go through the weekend, and then we'll start, you know, I'll follow up and see what's happening, and if this is a solution that we can offer them to see if this abates that smell, the, the initial first draw smell. And other than that, we've installed the auto flushers in Pelican Preserve now. So, we are moving water through there, we're maintaining residual. Myself or one of the staff is out there every single day. We have three sample points, we're checking the residual. We've done our part as far as we can do. Hopefully, the reason we're doing the, the water lines in the bathroom, in the back bathroom, because that's the, we have the residents that have one spot in their house where they have this issue, and it's just, so, we're, we're targeting that spot. And it seems, but as far as the, the final reports and the, the questionnaires that, that the Resident Alliance send out, the flushing really worked. I mean, we got a lot of really positive responses. We had some people complain that it's come back, but it is a plumbing issue. It is not, our water has been probably the most thoroughly tested water in the state at the moment. We've got so many people in there testing that water, it is, there's nothing wrong with our water. It is a plumbing issue that seems to be, if you get into the lower residual numbers for extended periods, you have a, you have this, this situation that could pop up. And we are doing auto flushing at, at the moment, so as we get more people in, as they build up, we're going to get to the point where the auto flushing is going to be a thing in the past, except on the dead end.
Are the WCI and Lennar people aware of this problem?
Yes, and, yes, then they have, they, they contacted the Resident, Resident Alliance, and they are working on the hot water side, is what they were working on. Working with, I believe, two or three houses in, in the, in Pelican Preserve area, trying to get a solution.
Mr. Insurance, one thing I forgot on utilities is that Chris and Leslie, Vicki and I met last week to go over some, you know, to follow up on the Pelican accounts. And I think within a day or so, Leslie recorded a bunch of liens, and then within a couple of days after that, we had a stop, they received a stop letter, so a couple of stop letters have gone up a large amount, so. I think we've got a good program going forward. That was a very productive meeting that we had. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I want to commend you and all the people you're working on to help the, the new residents in Pelican Preserve on this, what must be a terrible issue for folks. I read the Alliance items that you referred to, and I don't recall seeing a recommendation that sinks and bathtubs that are not being used nonetheless should be, the water should be turned on, on, on those periodically.
Yes.
Was it, was it in there, and I just missed it, or has it?
I believe that was in the, that was one, a part of the original spreadsheet that, that the Resident Alliance had put out with the odor in the kitchen, or the, the, the back bathroom, the shower or the tub. Yes, I believe that they recommended that they move water through there. A lot of times, when you get the smell in the, in the showers, it's the pee trap. The water in the bottom is what's actually smelling, and then when the water hits it, that's what gives you that initial smell. They were, I believe that was part of the initial, from the Resident Alliance. It was definitely on the, the original spreadsheet. When everybody was questioned about it, that was one of the things.
Anything else, Kenny? Any other questions for it?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Manager.
I don't have a report today.
He didn't have any report?
No report, okay. Can you go ahead for him? You're up, you're up anyway.
Report it, report.
Where are we with the delivery orders?
They have been ordered.
Okay. Do we know how long it will be before they are here?
I don't have a delivery date yet.
How many did you order?
Two. One for this building and one for the pool.
And then we'll do the training for staff?
Staff is all, most of, I would say, 90% of staff is already trained. There's just some of the new hires, such as myself and Michael, who haven't been, I've been trained in CPR, but not on an AED, so we need to take the training.
And we're not putting one on the stock of field?
Not at this time. There's concern there that it would be unsecured, and those units are approximately $2,000, and I don't feel comfortable leaving something outside that somebody could hop a fence and walk away with a $2,000 piece of equipment. I don't feel good about that.
Yeah, let's not add another reason to continue to lock the parks up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Maybe I have a quick question. I promise if you really put them in the bag, um, I thought it was the delivery orders, is that what I heard? Okay, is any, do we, Flavia Walsh, Magnolia Lakes.
Just for the record.
Thank you. Is it going to be in this room, do you guys know, or is it installed or not?
I don't know the answer to that. Mike should know the answer.
Okay, and then the suggestion would be that maybe we can get, maybe the H R board members from, that use this building to do, send out an email that they could get certified to use it? Want to think about something like that?
Yep. To answer your question, Ms. Walsh, I, the intent was to put the delivery later in, in this, in this meeting room. And then that, that would be a good idea, that we can actually organize some sort of training the county puts on, or one of these organizations do, and they would pay the appropriate fee, and they could get trained.
Behind Margaret's seat, that's the, the hotspot.
Is this the bad chair?
That's the bad seat.
Okay, good. That leaves us with the County and Finance Manager, updates to the H R manual.
Yep, so, as we'll have today is more in regards to H R. Most of them were just minor things that staff has been working on over the past couple of months, just changing kind of the wording and, and places. They looked at taking out Cobra because we don't have enough employees. We've decided to keep things like that in because of the potential of us hiring more, and we're right at the cusp of that. Changing a couple of things, like the on-call policy that we're on forums, and actually putting that in the manual. Changing some wording, approval processes for managers. The big one that we looked at, and this is more in line to help kind of recruit staff, and, and has a better benefit, and administratively, just to make it easier for everybody, is changing, we currently have vacation time, sick time. Our vacation time is based on tenure, it's pretty spread out, and our sick time is just for regular, full-time hourly employees. It's six days a year, and it's, we're, we're having an issue with staff going negative with sick time. It's pretty low compared to, we kind of compare this to city of Cape Coral, city of Fort Myers, and Lee County. We're going to change it to just a lump sum PTO and get rid of the sick vacation. We would start out at 160 hours. And then for each five years of service here, they would go up an additional 40 hours, so a week. That can be used for personal, sick, vacation. As it sits now, there isn't, this wouldn't really put any more of a burden on the district financially with payouts and things like that. Essentially, if everybody just cup behold all their hours and didn't use any and left the district, from our policy now and what we would change to, it would only be an additional $1,800 over all the staff right now. So, it's not like it's putting a large burden on us, it's more of just, you know, to help bring people in, offering that time, you know, vacation time and things like that. So, that's our big change. That would be based on their service date, and to implement it, we would just start with the new accrual rates, starting based on their date of hire. So, those accr, those accrual rates would just go now, and we still have the cap. The next things are pretty minor. One that was talked about and went back and forth on before I started here was obviously because of the hurricane, pay policy for that. And basically, we just decided that that would be up to District Manager to decide, you know, if there would be three days to plan the circumstances for staff to come in. Of course, since it's a utility company, there would be essential personnel that would have to be here, and that could be treated as, as time to have or comp time for them being here, if there was paid time off for other employees. And then the last one was just, this is in our policy now, but it's for workman's comp only, is if there's an injury accident for workman's comp or requires a drug screening, we're just changing that to a general policy if there's injury accident, period, drug screening is required.
Go ahead, Ms. Clay.
Mike's on number one, the vacation and sick PTO. Have you coordinated that with your new payroll company, and they're able to handle that the way you want?
Yes, they are, and we have not put, we have the time off accrual, but we've not entered in because they have to write that whole policy. We just started with them Friday, this past Friday, and since this meeting is not even a week later, assuming it's approved, we didn't want to have to go through, doing it over again with them. So, they are able to take this on, and we enter it, and I'm able to track it, and it's all done electronically, so it won't be an issue.
No question. Oh, hey, Mike, with the review of the H R manual, how in-depth was that review? Was it fully reviewed, and these were items that were identified, or these were highlighted items that you addressed?
The, so, these were, and this was going on a little before I started here.
Right, yeah, we're aware, I think, of most of these, history.
An attorney, as well as I think Tony had went through it as well, provided his comments, those were all addressed. We were provided a final copy with all of those changes, which I think was a lot of wording and just simple little things. And then we looked, we all had a meeting, managers, and looked at things that we may want to change that were just outdated.
The only recommendation that I would have, and it may be something that you'll have to plan out, is to, to do an actual, I don't know if it's an independent review, or, you know, maybe hire, or have somebody come in and assist in reviewing the H R, your handbook and your, or in the employee manual. Because to my knowledge, we don't have anyone on staff that has a background in this, in this area. So, as great as a staff review is, you, you may not, we may not have the substantive expertise to fully identify where areas were, were either at risk or things that we need to put in to, you know, for, for whatever reason. So, that's, Chris, that might be something that we look at, doing an overall review in the future at some point. Because we're not, we don't have anyone on staff, that's the only thing we have to hold people, or, or to have a, you know, a policy or procedure document that we adhere to.
Chris, you had an H R attorney review the entire document, correct?
The original draft came from Henderson Franklin, we sent that over to them to go-
The whole H R, the manual?
Right.
Okay, all right.
The whole document, and then from their comments, we edited and gave it to Tony, and Tony had a sheet full of comments.
Yeah, and we have an H R attorney in our office also, who used to be at Henderson Franklin. And so, she looked at it, and we had off a comment.
And the other was really some more practical things, really utility, and, you know, attendance is essential at work, and the vacation, sick, the personal days, it's like you're filling out all these forms, it's like, here's your time off. Fill out the form, it doesn't matter if it's sick, if it's vacation, it's time off.
No, that's good, and I'm glad we, we've gone through some type of review process, that's, that's good, thanks.
And we also discussed, these with the employees sat down, and we sat after the board and approves that if they have any comments, and we'll sit down and have a meeting and go through all the changes on the account.
Good, good, thanks.
You have a question? Well, I do have a comment, that I did take the book when Chris had it, and I read the whole thing.
Okay, all right, good.
So, make some comments. We have a motion to accept.
We have to have a motion to accept, don't we?
Yes, and I think it's also important for the effective date, is intended the effective date is today or March 1st, or what date were you anticipating?
That'll be, we'll have to add this in now, so we can make it as effective as of today. Now, I won't have it out, the final copy out and ready as of today. So.
Or maybe make it effective March 1st, it might be.
I would do something, future state, you know, March 1st is probably-
Give us a leeway.
That way it gives an opportunity to put that in there again for Chris and Mike, give it to the employees in advance.
Yeah, okay.
They already know what's in there, but it's always good to see the definite date.
I made the motion to accept it effective March 1st, 2018. Okay, the motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Margaret question. Under, are we still under accounting?
Yes.
If you want me.
And we asked, we asked where I asked at the last meeting to have Stephen here, and so, I'd like to make this brief. At the last meeting, Stephen, it was some of the things that we heard on the timeliness of your office and operation. Getting checks out just ain't getting it. I would hope that the, since that meeting, there's been discussions back and forth, and the bugs have been worked out, and we won't hear about contractors not getting paid timely, or employees not getting paid timely, or anybody not getting paid timely anymore.
Yeah, so, since then, I've talked with Paula, who's the, I think, AP and payroll manager. I've talked to her for hours and hours since then about this. We've, you know, there, there's minor issues with timing from our office as well, and getting there and, and being mailed, so it's, it's part of, it's part of them. She has said that, you know, she is more than willing and set time aside to work and, and do training with this new, with this program that they've had us on for, I believe, a year, and, and she gave me access to that, I brought it up at the last meeting, so we can actually get in and see what's going on. And she wants to work on implementing something to, now, we are sending things here kind of real time to them. We're issuing POs for invoices, we're doing a lot more paperwork and tracking that really may not be necessary. It is not necessarily necessary for them. But we have it in here to kind of control it, and some of that may be able to be eliminated, as well as we're going to sit down, and we've started a minor spreadsheet, it's only been a few, but they want to have kind of all of our utilities, which would, you know, our cable, electric, all that, the gas, everything on just auto ACH. So, it will come directly out of our account. So, you know, I've been kind of tied up with the payroll thing for the past couple of weeks, she was doing training. So, possibly tomorrow, I know it's in next week and the week after, we will be working together over Skype to try and hopefully get a process for both of us.
Well, now that our employees have been pretty well, and staff's been taken care of, I want to make sure that I don't hear from vendors calling me saying, hey, I'm, I'm working for you, doing the work, and I'm not getting paid timely.
Right.
That's, that's not right. Okay.
And we've had a couple of instances where we don't, didn't really have the time last week to wait for it to go through and get a check cut, and they allowed us just to do an ACH.
Well, the, the other one that was the farce at the last meeting is we had two permit applications that set- The other one that was the farce at the last meeting is we had two permit applications that sat here for two $1,100 checks for some cockamamie reason, and we couldn't file them without, for the LDO applications. That, to me, is just absurd. We should be able to call over there and if we need two $1,100 checks, they should be expressed to us the next day. That's ridiculous.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, obviously, I agree with that. We have expedite methods that we use all the time. So, you know, I'm not sure about these two in particular. But we do have, you know, a software now that we've been using and implementing that is, digitizes every invoice and tracks the timeliness of every step. So we have that available, where we can track it. We also do check runs for the district twice a week, most weeks. So it's really not an issue of, you know, we're not doing check runs or once a month or something.
A lot of times things hot, like that LDO application. I mean, we needed that check there and not going to slept and no ticky, no laundry.
Yeah.
You gotta have that check.
Again, I'm not sure about that particular, those two. But we happen to pass expedite to things.
Okay.
You know, we, ACH is, is obviously some of this, or some of the things we've run across are some utilities and things. But we'll, you know, we'll certainly keep working to get that streamlined and resolve that.
The expedite system works very, very well.
Great.
Very well. Clear of all our problems.
Normally, it's, it's copying me, the email.
Even so, you do have a great job.
Good, good, good.
And that brings us to the consent agenda. A. You want to pull A?
Yes, please.
Okay. Go ahead and do that and then we'll ask for the.
I think I have to go back to Mike, a question. Page 31 of our agenda, it says that there is no signature from Gateway Soccer Association. You told us last time there was.
I believe Margaret's signing it, thank you.
Oh, okay. And at the same time, we did ask for the number of children that are involved in all the sports and how many are of Gateway and how many are not.
I do not have that number yet.
Thank you.
What was the answer to that?
I don't have the number.
On average, historically, it's been about 50%.
Yeah, but I wanted the.
Yeah, the actuals.
Actual, and not percentage, I wanted numbers.
By, by event or by, by vendor or by?
By league.
Act.
By league, yeah, by league.
Each league.
And then there are a couple here that are expiring, dates of 3/16 and 2/28. The cleaning, the.
2/28, it's next week.
Seven trends, yeah.
Already made arrangements for both of them, I should have those contracts.
For the next fourth.
Thank you very much.
Could I, could I follow what she was working on? Can it look, like our engineering services contract expires in a, in a short period of time. What, if anything, have you done about that?
We'll be going out to request for qualifications for district engineer next month and have the respondents back in April and ready to select either existing or a new district engineer in that before that contract expires.
And, may I have an update on the Land Street contract? That's, that's you.
Yeah, well, we did get the, we got the bids and tomorrow morning, we're gonna look over the bids at 9:00.
Oh. Thank you.
Any other questions on consent agenda?
No.
I'll make a motion to accept consent agenda.
Okay. All right, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda item 4A and 4B?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. Preliminary report, utility rate study, no action required for informational purposes only.
I'll pick that up.
This is like, sounds like an NFL disclaimers.
Well, it's preliminary, I'll introduce Darrell Parker. He's with Willden Financial Services and he's been working with our staff. And Chuck Lewis has been working with us to perform a rate study and update the information in our utility. And he'll make his presentation. And if there's any other questions, what'll happen is in the next couple of months, we'll come back with any direction from the board and any increase in the rates or change will require a public hearing. At the same time, we'll also be modifying some of our policies and procedures, including the collections and customer contracts and liens and just bringing those into current business practices. And I'll let Darrell introduce himself and say hello and go through his presentation.
Thank you, Chris. Good afternoon, I'm Darrell Parker with Willden Financial Services. And I've been working with your staff for the last several months. And we've been working on a rate study for the water, wastewater and irrigation systems. And so the reason I'm here today is to kind of show you what we've done and show you some ideas we have and get your thoughts and kind of get some direction on where we want to go from here for a final adoption of rates at some point. Would you like me to run that or?
It's up to you, I can.
Okay, I can do that. Alright, well, and I do want to say this is meant to be informal. I'm gonna, Chris has asked me to get through this in about 15 or 20 minutes, but please stop me with any questions that you have. Well, first off, the rate study objectives. Whenever we're doing a study like this, I mean, our first thing we want to make sure is whatever we do with your rates, that we're gonna recover all your costs. So full cost recovery, obviously. We don't want to make any changes that are going to impact you negatively from a financial standpoint. Cost-based rate structure, we'll talk a little bit about that. Equity among customer classes, that's where we want to make sure we're not under recovering or over recovering from one group versus another at the burden or benefit of another customer class. Administrative efficiency, just a long way of saying, we want your rates to be easy to understand, easy to implement, easy for your customers to know what's going on. And not to say they're not now, actually, we'll talk about your current rate structure and it's in pretty good shape as it is. We did develop a five-year financial plan here again separately for each of the three utility systems as well as combined. And one of the things that we always want to try to focus on is that whatever we do, it's consistent with industry standards and that we're not kind of pushing the envelope at all. Just a quick visual on just the illustrative process of the, the cost of service and the rate study methodology. The green part up top, that's our revenues. Your revenues come from your customers and their flows. We take that data, we analyze it, we separate it out into customer classes and to usage blocks. We apply the rates to it, we do what we call billing frequency analysis and revenue reconciliation, just to make sure that the data's good. If we apply the rates to the data and we're generating the revenues that your financial reports indicate, or at least in the ballpark, we're pretty comfortable with the data. And you guys had very good data and so the analysis went well and we're very comfortable moving forward. That's where your revenues from your existing rates come from. In addition to rates, you've got other revenues from miscellaneous service charges, penalty fees, that kind of thing. And so that's part of our rate analysis. The bottom part, that's the amount that we have to, have to recover. We've got to make sure we're covering your operating and maintenance expenses, any debt service obligations, as well as any other capital or transfer obligations that the utility, that the utility revenues have to fund. From there, we just move on to rate design, which is our next step. Your existing rate structure, it's pretty, pretty common in the industry. You've got two components. You've got a set of base charges, that's the minimum amount that any customer will pay. That's kind of service availability component, if you will. Then you've got volumetric rates that are applied per 1,000 gallons of flow. And as we're gonna talk about a little bit, we're gonna look at some structural changes possibly to that structure. Let's go ahead. That minimum monthly charge is applied by meter size. What that means is for larger metered connections, larger than the standard residential, that, that, that charge, that monthly charge goes up incrementally for that larger connection. The theory behind that being that if you're a larger metered connection, you have a greater potential impact on the system than that smaller meter. So you should pay a higher base charge because of that potential demand. The current structure utilizes, which we are totally on board with and we're glad you're doing this, what we call AWWA, the American Water Works Association. They kind of set the standards for rate setting, for engineering design within the water system. And your current rate structure meets the equivalency factors and the, the structure that is consistent with, with AWWA standards. So we're happy to see that, we don't always see that. So, so that was definitely a good thing. The volumetric rates, you utilize what we call an inclining block rate structure or a conservation rate structure. And so the, at, at certain increments of flow, every 6,000 gallons, that rate per thousand gallons actually goes up. So that provides a pricing signal and incentive to conserve water. So that's for residential. For commercial, it's, it's a two-block structure, just at, for 6,000. And that's per, you see the term per ERU? That means per equivalent residential unit. So what we do is, what you're doing now and then, and what we continue, we suggest you continue. That 6,000 gallons for the commercial, that's for the smallest size meter. For that larger meter, they get an ERU factor, so that 6,000 gallons is incremented up so that they don't unnecessarily fall into that second higher rate block, just like a residential customer would. So here again, part of this is equity and that's one of the things we're looking at. We'll continue with the, with the wastewater. You've got, the volumetric rates for wastewater are a uniform rate. They're, they're not blocked, they're not inclining, which is, is pretty standard. You're not really trying to send a pricing signal for conservation on the wastewater side. And so, so we don't see any changes there. The volumetric rates for irrigation, it's a similar inclining block structure to the, to the water, but it is bigger gallon amounts. For example, it's three blocks. The first block, the first cutoff is 25,000 gallons as opposed to six. And that's fine. Part of what, what, what we see here in Gateway is that the irrigation is also used as a method of wastewater effluent disposal. So, so part of that purpose is to get, get that irrigation water used. Now, one thing I will say, you can see up there, your current rate for, for the, for the irrigation water is pretty low. It's, it, you, you do want to get rid of it, but you also kind of want to make it a, a, a financial benefit to the utility system as well. And we'll talk a little bit more about that.
Are you saying the dollar rate percent or cost per thousand's low?
Yes, sir.
Or the volume bracket is low?
No, the, the dollar amount.
The dollar amount.
Yeah, it's only 30 cents per thousand right now.
Yeah, well, we have three, three brackets.
Yes, the lowest is 30.
And then dollar 25 and then five or whatever the number is.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And we'll look at this in just a little bit, that's coming. Go ahead. So just real quick, we'll show you those dollars. These are the, the base charges, that minimum charge that we talked about. So you can see for larger meters, that minimum goes up for those larger connections. Same structure for wastewater, which is great. We love to see consistency between the water and wastewater systems. Irrigation is similar structure, although we're gonna propose some minor adjustments structurally to the irrigation. And we'll talk about that. Nothing that's a huge financial difference. These are the volumetric rates. You can see here again, this is a visual of that blocking that we see for the, for the water, for the residential. It's five blocks at every 6,000 gallons. And so that rate goes up incrementally. You can see for the commercial, it's just the two-block structure we talked about. And for wastewater, uniform rates, meaning it doesn't matter how much you use, that's your rate per thousand gallons. And here's the irrigation that we were just talking about, 30 cents for that first block and then a dollar 20 and then 240.
When you showed these, can you, especially when we get to the public, on the water and the wastewater, show our cost per thousand gallons to Lee County for both water and wastewater?
Do we have that information readily available? Then yes, we can show that.
Yeah, because they're, they're.
Okay, I haven't seen that. Sure, yeah, we'll be happy to show that.
One of the things they do is they discount, and the thing to be discussed here, they discount our wastewater by 10% the flow. So through the master meter, if we read a million gallons a month, they bill that on the water, but on the wastewater side, they bill 900,000.
Okay, but.
We don't do that internally and there needs to be a discussion of that going forward. Because we've had issues with swimming pool fill-up. It's water used, but it's not wastewater returned, that type of thing.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
So just a couple of minor structural changes that we're talking about. You can see here for the minimum charge, no material structural changes. You'll see a little bit of tweaking that we're gonna talk about, but nothing in terms of, you know, noticeable dollar amounts. For the, for the irrigation, the irrigation base charge right now, it's, it's incremented for larger connections, but it's not consistent with the water and the wastewater as far as those factor differentials. And you'll see that in a second. And that's one of the things, we're not sure why it's that way. It would kind of make sense to get, get that consistency between water, the wastewater and the irrigation. And it's.
That's, that's difficult when irrigation is based upon area to be irrigated. And you could have some commercials that have a six-inch water meter and a water demand, but they got 50 square feet of grass.
Well, these are separate metered connections, the irrigation connections.
Correct, correct. But I mean, if you're trying to tie the, the philosophy of water, wastewater versus irrigation usage.
Right.
Those two are miles apart.
Well, there, there are still industry standards that, I mean, here again, these are suggestions that we're making. Nothing at all that, that you have to say, yes, we want to do that. You can say, well, we kind of like it the way it is and that's fine too. But yes, that's a very good point. The volumetric rates, the, the one real thing that we are proposing here, not necessarily a rate increase, but more of a, a pricing signal for those larger, those higher flow amounts. So what we're talking about is, is those block rate differentials, how much higher that next rate is from the prior rate. We'd kind of like to see you send a little bit more of a pricing signal on that and we'll see those dollars here in just a second. On the wastewater and the irrigation rates, no structural changes are proposed. They're right where they need to be structurally. So here's, I told you, we had a little bit of tweaking to do on, on the, the base charges. The first column there shows the meter sizes. That second, I usually have a pointer. That second column has the AWWA factors. And those are factors that are established right out of the AWWA engineering manuals and manual M1 for rate setting. And so, so there's a good basis for that. And you can see for, for water and wastewater, for your existing differentials. And all that means is, is that, that five-eighths inch meter, how much higher is that next base charge for the one inch? And how much higher for the, for the one and a half inch? I think all that's happened is probably some rounding over recent years is why they're a little bit different from the AWWA. So all we're saying is let's pull those back. We're talking pennies, really. It makes no, no real financial impact at all. Now, you can see for the irrigation, it's just, it's different by kind of a factor of two past that, that smallest meter size. Not sure if, you know, what the decision was behind that. It may have been a decision process similar to what you were saying. And, and if that's the case and that's a policy decision, I mean, that's fine. Our only thought is we weren't sure why it's different from the others, so.
Looks like a mistake to me. It looks like a mistake to me.
Well, and, and that's possible.
What?
We won't call it a mistake.
At least it's consistent.
It is consistent, it's just, yeah, it's just kind of double the, the other number, which is, yeah. We're, you're, you're starting off with a much lower number for that irrigation base anyway. But it's still, it's, it's, from our standpoint, it's really just more of a consistency thing.
Our problems are more severe than this.
So for the, for the volumetric rates, same kind of thing. We're talking, talking some structural changes. You can see the, the, the existing factors. All we're doing there is assuming that block one rate is the, is the, is the factor of one. Every other rate divided by that is the differential from, from that first block. So you can see block two is a third higher and then another third higher and so forth. And so our, our, our thought on that is, that's not bad. But if you're really trying to send a stronger conservation signal, pricing signal to conserve water, let's bump those up a little bit and, and get those, get those higher users paying more and, and, and hopefully feeling that, that, that price signal and maybe cutting back a little bit. Go back one, same kind of thing for, for the commercial. So you can see that the commercial is just tied to the first two residential blocks anyway. So that wouldn't change. Now here's a, a, a kind of, let's say, a big picture financial outcome of what we projected for the upcoming fiscal year. This would be the fiscal year that will begin on October 1 of 2018, which will. This would be the fiscal year that will begin on October 1 of 2018, which will be fiscal 2019. All we did is, we projected revenues based on, we did, I mentioned the customer analysis, the flow analysis. And so so this is at current rates, and so we projected revenues for each system, allocated operating costs, debt service, and any other reserve requirements. And you can see, right now, the based on the current rates, we would project that the water system might come up a little bit short. Not a lot, but just it's it's cutting it close. Wastewater system is 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 doing pretty well right now. The irrigation is a little bit, it's having a little bit more of a struggle financially. Now, I will have to caveat this, these are not huge dollars we're talking, but if the ultimate goal is to have each system self-sufficient, then some adjustments are are in order.
That's that's for the fair and equitable. This, I've been harping on this issue for 10 years here.
And we're proud to hear it.
We're going to get it fixed. We got somebody knows what the hell they're doing for once. My concern has been is the accountability of the revenue and the cost to the right category here. So that's that's, I think, a part of this that that causes some of the issue. But but we can't have the wastewater be the sugar daddy anymore.
Well, and and that is true, and and you, and it's okay for that to happen, you know, kind of temporarily, because sometimes just costs do change. You know, you issue new debt for one system, and and maybe you need a little bit of financial support for another from another system till till you can get the revenues caught up. Because you don't want to have, you know, any severe rate impacts on your customers either, because all your all these customers are the same. Now, you do have some that are water-only, but most of your customers are combined water and sewer. So they're the same ultimate customer. Now, you do have fewer, and we're going to look at this in just a second, fewer irrigation customers. So so right, you don't want a whole lot of, you don't want any real subsidizing going on, but if if it's just kind of a catch-up, and ultimately you get there over a couple of years, that that can happen. Let's go ahead. Here's the customers that we're talking about. You can see the the blue bar is water, the green bar is wastewater, and the yellow bar is irrigation. So you do, most you're, you do have more water customers than the other two. And you can see there's a there's a growth trend. I mean, you guys are in in a growth area, thank goodness. And so so you're going to generate additional revenue from each of those just by the fact that you've got growth. Now, what we're seeing, though, is your 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 revenues by growth are not going to go up probably as much as your expenses, primarily because there's some new debt coming on. There's some SRF that you mentioned. The majority of that is going to go to the wastewater system. The next biggest portion will be irrigation-related, and then the smallest portion of that will go to the water system. So here's what we're what we're talking about for the for the proposed rates. And this is a comparison of, these are the base charges, a comparison of of what we've got, what what you have currently, and then what we're proposing. You can see we're we're not looking at any base charge changes for the for the water system, for the sewer system, for the for the irrigation system. Well, I I say not any. You can see there's some minor changes because of those factor adjustments that we made. Some of them were a little bit off, and so we tightened them back up to get them right back equal to AWWA. That starts at that at that one and a half inch meter. You see, the water goes up a penny, and the sewer goes up a penny, and then it goes up a little. That's all that is. That's just a tightening of those factor differentials. What we've done with irrigation is if we bring it to those factors that are consistent with the with the water and the wastewater, for the larger meters, their their rate actually is going to go down from what it is now. But the good thing is, on that, the big, the by-far biggest portion of of the irrigation revenue is volumetric. It's not, you're not really relying on that base charge so much. Okay. Now, here are the the existing and proposed comparison side by side for the volumetric rates. You can see for the residential water, we're not changing that first block. And so the majority of that, then remember that first block is the first 6,000 gallon, first 6,000 gallons of flow, that's going to be the majority of your your customers' flows. So and as you're going to see in a minute, customers at 6,000 gallons or less aren't going to see any increase, because we're not suggesting any change to that first block for water or at all for the wastewater yet. So but what we do want to see is a little bit more pricing signal on those higher blocks. And so you'll see that both in the residential and a little bit on the commercial. And you can see, one, I guess, one of the bigger things to also address, the irrigation rate, we'd we'd like to see you get that up to about 50 cents. We're we're showing 50 cents here. That that'd be a nice one one step if you can go from where you are now to to that. That would get you kind of right in the ballpark of what most other utilities charge for irrigation, probably still on the lower end of that ballpark, but at least at least in the ballpark. The 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 other option of that is to phase that over maybe a few years. But we we wanted to show ultimately where we'd like to get you to, and if we can get there in one step, that'd be great.
So if you're on the tier one, and we talked about 25,000 on the bracket?
Yes, sir.
And that's monthly, not bimonthly, it's monthly.
That would be monthly, yes, sir.
So our customers would be associated with 50,000 on a bimonthly, and 50 times 20 cents, it's 10 bucks on their bill.
Right. And that's if they if they use that whole first block.
Yeah, use the whole block.
Right. Okay. So here we can see a comparison. This is water, as as we mentioned, that typical 6,000 gallon customer and below, there's no change at all. So that pricing signal starts to kick in as you use more and more flow. It's kind of one of those things that it just depends on on where you, as an individual customer, would fall within that bracket. Obviously, there's going to be some even higher than 20,000, but that's not going to be the majority of your customers by any means. So wastewater, we're not proposing any changes to the wastewater right now, so there's no change at all in the wastewater. So if we look at the combined, you know, their 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 bill, they're right now, they're about that, once they get over 6,000 gallons, their their $87.10 bill is going to go up by 56 cents. So so we're not suggesting any significant increases, more of just kind of some structural changes to, it will generate more revenue and 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 but it's that additional revenue is coming from your really high users of your system. Okay. Just kind of a a visual, graphic visual of that that same comparison. You can see, nobody starts going up till after the 6,000 gallons, and that's combined water and sewer.
The other one you want to do when we have the presentation is obviously blend in our competing communities, city of Fort Meyer, Lee County.
Oh, that's coming.
Okay.
Go ahead. Right there. So you guys are on the low end already. And this is a combined water and wastewater bill at 6,000 gallons per month. As you can see, obviously, what what we've proposed in here so far, there's no change from existing to proposed. But I mean, look where you guys are, not only compared to the others, but compared to the average, you've got a got a lot of room for adjustment. What that tells me is, it could, it can tell us a lot of things. I mean, you're you're probably running your system pretty well now. You're operating it well, you're 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 being fiscally responsible, and I would imagine your utility staff is is doing a great job operationally. So that, we don't know what some of these, especially some of these city-owned, county-owned systems, we don't know what they're doing with their financials beyond just utility operations. You know, there may be some transfers to the general fund, let's say, whatever. There there could be some things that that push their rates up that that you guys are are keeping under control. So all that to say is that your your customers should be pretty happy with where you are now, and 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 even if some changes are needed, it looks like you guys are doing everything you can to control your financial position.
What, Bill, how many of our customers are in city of Fort Meyer, over, probably a thousand?
Our customers are in the city of Fort Meyer.
Eventually be about 2,100, I think, yes. Of the total, about 2,100 to the 25. So so they they know they know it, they know it well right now.
Next to a neighbor.
So it's a, we understand it very well. We've, we're running pretty squeaky clean on staff, too. That makes a big difference. It's kind of absurd what, it's gotten better since the changeover, but it's got a ways to go, so that that accounts for a lot of it, too.
Well, I mean, it looks good from my standpoint, from an outsider. Okay, the projected operating results on this is for the combined systems, and and we'll see a graphical of of each one separate. What what we see here is the 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 top three rows are the projected rate adjustments. Now, I mentioned that we're not changing anything on on water or wastewater for fiscal 19, but as some of that debt service kicks in, we're going to probably need some adjustments for for the water. If we if we do the if we do the irrigation, implement that 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 change from 30 to 50 right away, granted, the percentage looks pretty high, but the that it's kind of needed, as you'll see, to to pay for the upcoming debt service. Probably the wastewater system, as we saw, it's it's got a pretty good margin right now. That's going to trend down, as you'll see in a minute, and probably if, you know, by the time we get to the end of that five-year projection period, it may need an adjustment. It may not. I mean, five years from now, a lot of things can change. So we'll look at look at that down the road. That bottom, the very bottom row being what we call debt service coverage, that just means how much your, how much over your your net revenues are over your debt. The, I think the SRF requires a minimum of maybe 1.1 or 1.15.
A lot of them are 1, 2, 5, somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah, if if you were, if you were going to the bond market, it'd probably be in the 1.25 range. And so what this shows us is you guys are strong on coverage with with these financial projections and and the the structural changes and those rate adjustments that that we're looking at right there.
The one I've had concern on from day one has been the reserve capital program. I'd want to see the details of what you got in here, but those numbers look awful low.
For?
Reserve capital program.
Oh, for 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 the annual transfer?
I'd like to see, I don't I don't know how you generated these numbers, obviously, we're getting into that detail right now.
They're 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 based on the current budget, and we've kind of just assumed that those will grow as your O and M expenses grow, to the extent that you would like to more heavily fund that.
We we have been pretty lax, immensely lax on that issue.
Well, and if that's the case, now, your, this 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 financial projection does include your current capital improvements program, so it's funding the capital that that staff has told us is going to need to be funded over the next five years.
Well, that's good.
And still, hopefully, putting a little bit more into reserve. All right. Here's kind of the graphical of of the same same financial projection. You can see that that first set is, shows that what we saw earlier, kind of numerically, that in fiscal 19, the wastewater is going to do fine, the the water is going to be close, and the irrigation is is going to be struggling. So with the 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 very next set is the the same data, but at the the structural and rate changes that we proposed for the upcoming fiscal year, everybody comes back above zero. And then with the financial plan that we've that we've proposed, you can see the the yellow bar that's wastewater, that looked so high, is starting to trend down because you do have projects that you're being, that you're funding. You do have new debt service that's going to that wastewater requirement from the revenues. So that's what we see going there. And and in the irrigation, if we can make that adjustment and and get that up to to kind of consistent with what we see for other irrigation rates, they should be in good shape for a pretty good while. Here's a, what we see is is the rate path. This is that typical bill again, at 6,000 gallons per month. And that's just kind of an industry norm, number 6,000. You can see where you are now, and the proposed, we're not proposing any water or sewer adjustments to that to that group at least this year. It'll start to trend up a little bit. Remember, we saw water 3% a year, and then a 3% on that fifth year for wastewater. But what that does show us is that from from now till five years from now, that total bill is, assuming all these, all of our assumptions and projections are are in the ballpark, and we're talking an ultimate increase of $5 a month from from where they currently are. So and that's over that five-year period in total. And with that, we'll conclude. I think we have shown that that what we're proposing are some pretty manageable rate adjustments. There is new debt service that's driving a lot of this and and capital needs. Then you also have increasing just overall O and M costs. We always see energy, fuel, chemicals, there's other costs, too. Hopefully, your staff gets raises and that type of thing. So overall, yes, sir?
Did you get an opportunity to see our, what do you call it, chapter eight, 10, 12, whatever it is, of our rate structure and the definition? And I'm particularly concerned about fees, associated fees.
Availability fee.
Availability fee and all of those. I haven't seen any discussion on that, or is that too come?
Well, that that's not addressed as part of the rate study. If that's something that 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 this board would like addressed, yes, we can help with that.
Badly. We're collecting 1797, I think that's the number, 1797 fee for availability fee for water and sewer.
Oh, combined?
Combined.
Yeah, that sounds kind of low.
Kind of? It's absurd.
Well, we're collecting, now the county takes the chunk, too, so the total.
Yeah, but the county's is for a treatment plan.
No, we're not talking connection fee, we're talking availability.
Availability fee, that 17, well, it's that fee. It needs to be looked at.
Okay.
In fact, our whole fee structure, because we're looking at a lot of customers potentially coming on.
Right.
That the going rate for water and sewer connection fees, four to $6,000.
In Florida, yep.
Yeah, and we're losing about $3,000 to $4,000 per, and 1,000, that's 4 million bucks we're losing.
And and we'd be happy to help you take a look at that, because yes.
We definitely need to be looking at that.
It does sound low, just from from what we see from other utilities.
Because I'm somewhat of a one that believes in growth funds growth.
It should, yes.
Growth funds growth.
Yep. So, yes, sir, we'll be happy to help you.
We're getting to the point where we're starting to return, starting to see the turnover on some of our assets, that they've outlived their service life.
Sure.
I paid for it once. Why do I want to take and build into another 15, 20-year life, let Billy Bob that's coming in, let him pay for it?
Right, right.
The new user.
With recognizing the constraints that you have with regards to that, you know, as far as.
There aren't many.
Impact fees, or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, you got to watch that word.
Anything that comes close to being considered an impact.
Yeah, sure, sure. But it is, it's a capital recovery charge, and regardless of of how you term it, it's and 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 it does, basically, it's there to have have growth, pay for growth, because you don't want your existing customers paying for the the future expansions that are needed to facilitate those future customers.
Some of us that lived here 25 years are going on the deal of paying it for twice.
And and that can happen.
That's ridiculous.
And and it's never going to be perfect, but you want to mitigate it as much as possible.
That's correct.
Yes.
Will we be getting a copy of the report with the backup tables and data?
Yes, sir.
On what is great?
Yeah, yeah, and and we haven't, we haven't done a report yet. I wanted to, you guys all see this first, and Chris the same, he wanted kind of you guys to be able to see where we are, what we've done, before we kind of move forward with that next step of saying, yeah, this is what what you're going to do, or or what we're asking action on.
Another component, if I may add, too, is in our charges with our existing customers, we don't have a recapture. I mean, if a restaurant comes in and says, I need a one-inch meter, I'm going to use 1,000 gallons a day, well, 12 months later, he's using 3,000 gallons a day. We come back and assess them that capital.
One one little clause in our agreement with a 12-month buy-in, with we'll buy down the average, we'll stop that. I ran into that trick, I don't know how many times I got burnt by McDonald's in the Midwest. They come to a community, and we'll put a McDonald's on the interstate, oh, I only need a an inch meter, and I'm only going to use 10,000 or 20,000 gallon a day. Yeah, that's 60,000 gallon a day, and they play the game. What they're trying to do is avoid that upfront cost, that we said it in there, that we'll we'll base it on the first 12 months of operation after you're in operation, then it's a different story.
And I I've seen that clause, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that that helps stop that. The other one that we've got, and I I assume that you've got with him, our infamous Royal Green fiasco. Green fiasco, where Royal Green is got, has two 3-inch meters that they pay a base, and they have 350 ERUs? Like, uh-uh, that's gotta come to an end. These guys gotta pay fair and equitable charges. If they're going to be, and we don't differentiate between condos and apartments or any of that, one is one is one, so an ERU is anything that you have as a structure, okay? If we had 650, or 350 actual homes, they'd be paying one hell of a lot more money than two 3-inch meters. So, we got a game being played on that, that we've gotta get that addressed. There's several of the large-volume users that have done that.
Okay, and to comment on that, too, someone else has taken that opportunity for revenue because they hired a company to come in and submeter their units, and they bill each of those units for the water consumption.
Yeah, that's what's really good.
Wow.
Yeah.
So, they're acting as their own utility.
Bingo. And we're no longer the middleman. That's gotta be changed, but we can go over those. I mean, in the last 10 years analyzing this thing, how some of this stuff happened is beyond me, but glad to see that this is going.
And the debt, the debt they talks about, we projected some realistic capital requirements, and also looked at using the SRF because of the low interest rates to finance those utility improvements, because there is a lot of cash available on the water and wastewater side with the EP.
Ed, I'm sure if I can make sure that you copy this PowerPoint and make part of the public record, so it's a hard copy or a disk, so that Chris has it in the office, if anybody wants it.
So, the next step is, or should we, I can meet with Chris and go over all the things that I've got that we just kind of touched on.
Right.
Of issues that we want to make sure are addressed in this thing.
And I, and we do have a pretty substantial Excel spreadsheet model, it's kind of a dashboard model, and we've walked through it with Chris and with Leslie, and we've sent it for their review, and so they're well aware of all the working kind of pieces and parts within there.
But one of the issues we have, just to get onto the irrigation side, is we have a requirement with the county that we have to use every drop of water that comes out of that treatment plant.
Right.
So, we have a vulnerability that we've gotta use every drop of water that comes out of that treatment plant. We don't want to lose it.
Right.
Because we need it. But the problem is, in the summertime, when it's raining and our volume demand goes down, we're dumping a lot of irrigation water onto common area. How are we accounting for those millions of gallons in the billing procedure? If we're passing that on back to the general fund, to our landscaping, and the residents are getting a hit on that, one way or the other, the residents are gonna pick up the tab. It's just where it, where it shows up. And right now, we're having to dump a substantial amount of water during the summer out there into the system that goes through that meter, and unfortunately, it's not any customer, it's the CDD that's paying for it. And then we bill it on to the residents through the non-affirmative tax.
And I think some of the capital programs to address some of that, correct?
Correct. Disposal system generator for the irrigation system.
I think the big thing is just to make sure that we have what's up here of all the pains, we get them over to you, so that, well, I didn't know that. We want to make sure that we have that taken care of.
Right.
But this looks like a fantastic start. And you haven't been coerced by anybody whatsoever to, for lack of a better term, skew the plan like we did on the last one?
Not to skew, I was coerced by Chris. He said he was gonna take me to Don Shula's, but then I heard that wasn't happening.
I don't, I don't care about, what I'm talking about is, our last rate consultant was coerced.
No, this is...
And did not do what I consider justice to this community.
This is purely an independent study on our part. Obviously, we worked with staff to get data, and then we provided our recommendations, and we worked back and forth to, I mean, you know, part of our, part of our goal is not to just bring something to you that you have no interest in either, so we've worked with staff to develop a plan that we think benefits, obviously, the entire district.
My, I've been in this business for years, and two terms, fair and equitable. You can't make a mistake if it's fair and equitable. That's all I had. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, sir.
If we wanted to front load the capital improvement needs, so we were sure that we had enough funds to repair and replace some of these 26 and 27-year-old pipes and meters, not meters, pipes and all the rest of it.
Right, yeah.
Is that doable?
Well, that's kind of one of those things, if we go back a little bit here.
We gotta review that, what they were talking about, Bill. I totally agree with you. We need to see what we're telling him to put in there to make sure that we've got all the funding covered.
Right, if you see on this slide, this is based on the current capital funding plan as it exists. If you bring some of those dollars more this way, you can see you've got some bottom-line balances, even after funding the reserve for the capital program, that money can flow, can go back, and you could just bump up that capital program by, you know, that much. Or if you need more, then what'll happen is those rate needs will increase. So, it's kind of, it's a timing issue.
The 161 and the 168 do not look particularly strong to me.
Uh, let's see. Oh, for your capital reserve.
That's what I was talking about earlier, yeah.
Now, remember, a lot of your capital program is gonna be funded from the state revolving fund loan, and that's up there in that debt service number. So, you're getting funding...
We just need to see it all to know, make sure that we're covered.
Yeah, and remember, this is really just kind of a condensed summary.
And if we get those fees corrected on that availability fee and get that number where it should be, that'll help start generating some money for these capital programs that we need to address.
And that money would go into a designated reserve.
Capital.
For capital.
Correct.
Bill, did that answer your question? Do you have more that you wanted to?
I have five.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Very good.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having me, and we will then really appreciate having this opportunity, and I guess I'll come back and see you again in a couple of months.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Did you get to work with Chuck?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Chuck is great.
If Chuck passed on his stuff, then you've got most of the problems we've talked about.
Yeah, he did.
Because he was very familiar with what our problems were. Thank you, thank you very much.
We are to supervisor comments, so I'll start down with Mrs. Flaherty.
5B, I think, do you do that already?
What?
I'm sorry, Ed, I'm sure, release performance bond Pelican Reserve.
Yeah, 5B.
I'm sorry, Ed.
I thought we did that earlier, I'm sorry.
C and D, not B.
I'm confused. All right, we'll go back to 5B. Release of Performance Bond Pelican Reserve Tract Dell Azura.
Who makes the recommendation on that? Is that legal or engineering? Because I don't see Tyler. Sorry, Tyler.
He moved.
He switched seats.
Joe covered you up, didn't see you. Because I thought the recommendation was to sign off on that.
It was signed off back in 2012.
This looks like it was Chris that wrote the memo, so where's Chris?
He disappeared.
Well, in the meantime, since Chris isn't here, I can at least give you background on what it is. Azura was one of the very first streets in Tract Dell, so this is the construction Performance Bond, a part of Tract Dell. And from what I read anyways, it looks like Danny gave the recommendation for this back in 2012, so.
And I guess the test question is, during that period of time, well, three years gone by, but there've been no claims made as any repairs needed.
No claims in the three-year periods expired, so this is really a house.
I was gonna say, it's pretty well cleaned up.
Housekeeping.
No motions necessary.
I think it is, just for the record, to have it clear.
How do you, how do you do something that's already done?
I would say motion to release.
Motion to release for Azura Performance Bond for, is it performance and payment, or just Performance Bond? Performance Bond only for Azura.
Second.
Can you hear your discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right. Now, we're to supervisor comments, and I will start down with Mrs. Flaherty.
Yes, I do, I have a few.
A few? How many is a few?
I want to discuss the fun park, okay? We have the basketball court down there at the fun park, and in my travels with landscaping, and we want to install a pickleball and a bocce court, and I'm thinking that we could do that down there, get rid of the basketball court, bring the basketball court up to the common pool area where there is already a gate, and there is room for it, because I have looked at it as a suggestion, and I thought that will cause less trouble there at the fun park that people are having. I go to, I've gone to the fun park, and I've never seen any problems, but I don't go really. So, but I just thought that was a suggestion, that we could look into where, put the bocce and the pickleball.
That'd be one of the options I'd suggest, that we bring in this park consultant, that he examine. That certainly is an option.
And I think that...
I got a comment around that.
Because with the common pool...
But some of the people that are in those...
There is a gate that closes already, so that's what I was thinking.
People in those betting communities may not like that, but...
I think we're, I think we're looking at a complete parks program, so, and Doug is gonna address that. Instead of doing it piecemeal, we're gonna do one basketball court and one bocce court. Let's look at what, all we can do.
We need to look at the whole thing.
In one, address it all.
All right. My next, my next address is actually to Mr. Tinkle, because he made a comment last, at last meeting, and I didn't have the numbers, so when you talked about Stony Brook having two Eastmans and Gateway takes over, however, you didn't mention L told you that it comes out of the OO4 fund, which Stony Brook people pay $543.19 each into their fund of the EAUs that we are paying, and everyone else, like in Gateway Greens pays $517.74, we pay $1,060. So, you said, well, you would like Gateway to, Gateway Greens to have, Gateway to have...
It is, it's a definite advantage to be able to have. I would love to dump my landscaping contract. That is a, that's a ache that starts up here and goes south.
But Gateway Greens...
And I would gladly give it over to the CDD.
But would you want every resident to pay? I mean, we only have the two, so we pay over 500. So, if you have eight, think of...
You pay over 500 because it's got a lot of other items in there, though.
But Bill has wrote, right, but it still would cost them a lot of money.
Well, my point was, my point was at the time of making that, was where did it come from? Because it's shown as master association property.
No, not the landscaping.
No, 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 on the, on LEPA, unless LEPA's wrong, the property that we are maintaining, the CDD is maintaining, is identified as Gateway-Stony Brook Master Association. I'm talking about those two big areas. Well, the lady that had the complaint, behind her house, that's common area that's dedicated to master association.
There's drainage, that's drainage, she's went back. I think you're looking at the wrong console.
Okay, we can check, we can check on it, but that was the basis.
Because I couldn't, I can't, couldn't address you individually, I have to address you.
Gotcha.
Okay, that was it.
But the point I think Happy's trying to make is, the only funds that are being paid for anything inside of Stony Brook are paid for only by, only by Stony Brook residents. It doesn't come out of OO1 unless it has to do with the lakes. That's the only thing.
I totally understand that, but what I'm saying is, there is a benefit to that. I would love to take my $400,000 of landscaping and let that be a CDD issue to maintain, where I don't have to do it.
Well, don't try it.
But it would cost each resident a lot of money.
I think it would be less, to tell you the truth. It's more cost-effective.
Anything else? No.
Mr. Guy?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to address the Board Advance, which is next Thursday at 9:00 a.m., and I think there was a little bit of a misconception about what the Board Advance was gonna be, because it's more administrative and not down to project.
It's that a way because there was some confusion. You were sick. We had several issues that came up at the last meeting that we were told would be discussed at the Board Advance, and we're now finding out, you on parks, me on, talking about the funds and transfer of funds to accommodate costs, we're talking about sort of moving all those to the advance. Well, Joe Di Cerbo is saying this is a management type of a deal, not an operations thing, so, and that falls along the line. I think we need to, I don't, I don't want, I don't think there's a need and necessity to have that done in an advance. We can do it in this meeting, but I think at the next meeting, we need to put on the agenda those things that I identified in my email that I couldn't send to the rest of you, but I had like five items that I thought we would talk at at the advance, and Joe nixed them all. So, I think we need to put them back on the agenda for the next meeting.
Well, there's something that I was talking to with April way back, I think it's just about the time we had this new board come on.
Before you move on, because you're next, I just want to also make it clear that the Board Advance is for the Board, and it's not a public input, it's not open for the public to comment.
It's open to the public.
Right, the public is welcome to sit and listen silently.
And there won't be any action taken or votes taken.
Right, that's correct. I just wanted to make that clear.
In minutes will be taken.
Because I think some people were given the impression that public comments were gonna be taken, and they're not, so, okay.
Okay, good, so, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay.
So, anyway, what, we did this, I think, once, maybe twice, where, and I think we're doing a great job of managing our agenda within a timely matter. I mean, can you imagine what, getting out at 5:30 in the past would have been like...
That's because he has to leave at 5:40.
Yeah.
Keep going, Doug.
That's easy.
But even like, let's just say, in years past, it's been a long time. So, but one of the things that I recommend is, at least once a month, or once every other month, we split one of, one of the two meetings a month and have at least an hour of a working session. We did it at least once or twice before. It's a great opportunity for us to address items. I think the Board Advance is fine, if that's administrative, I have no problem with that, but my recommendation would be to Chris to look at the next available opportunity. If it's the next meeting, that would be great for us to chittle out at least an hour.
And then give him the items that we want to have. May not be able to get them all, but...
And I have two.
We can just start working on things we want to do, work, more workshop oriented.
Right, and the two that I have is definitely a parks and recreation plan, a facilities or development plan, and then an actual district facilities plan, because we do need to come up with an option as an alternative to Girl Scout, because, you know, so we need to have some discussion on that. So, those are two items, and I think, Ed, if you've got some, if you'll, or if any other board members have items that they'd like to openly discuss in a more, you know, working environment as opposed to outside of our traditional agenda.
One more, you're looking at my notes. I agree with both of those two, and one more, we've talked about the need for funds to get into this storm sodder, storm sodder, storm water management system fixing the sewers.
Okay.
We gotta figure out where that money's coming from. We're short of about a million and a half bucks, so we need to talk about that.
Yeah, we do.
So, funding is basically the option.
That's all that I have.
That's all I have.
No way.
Wait a minute, what time you get...